All right, it's six oh five and we've called the special meeting for a selectmen to order our agenda item this evening until six o'clock is a budget workshop. To review the budget as presented by the first selectman make any recommended changes. And if time permits, proceed to a vote. So we've gone through. All members of the board of selectmen are here. Is there any public participation? Okay, then we'll go on to the call of the agenda. So before we start, as with all things, budgets change over time. And we have since my submission gotten updated budget numbers in terms of what our. Pension contribution needs to be this year and that number can actually come down by sixty thousand maybe fifty nine thousand dollars. And we also have done a census of employee healthcare and our benefits line can come down by a hundred thousand dollars. So that that right off the bat is gonna make tonight I think a little bit easier. I'm gonna mark those and when we get to that section, we can discuss in both. But just for discussion sake, I'm gonna mark them and highlight them. Green will be locked in. Yellow will be still open discussion as we proceed through this. Okay, so do we want to start right from the beginning and work our way down? Any areas within the selection budget that folks like to talk about?
The only thing I made notes from your presentation that you better move the evergreen. Communication.
It's not in there. It's in the communications line. Anybody else have anything in this budget? Can I ask for motion to accept it as presented?
I'll move to accept the selections budget as presented at two hundred eighty seven thousand three hundred eighty nine dollars.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
My show now. Reducing what was submitted to you and then more reasons around.
My budget. We, in the next fiscal year, we will not have a charter revision commission. Just to kind of let folks know how that process works out, we're required by law to do a review of the charter every five years. We are not required to do to make any changes to it. We are required to review it every five. We are also allowed to review it more regularly. So in keeping with the practice of the last couple of years, what I would like to do pertaining to charter revision is impannal the next charter revision commission pursuant to FY twenty. Three twenty four, the budget after this, that gives them the full eighteen month process to line up any proposed charter questions with the presidential ballot. On which our governing documents should have the highest level of public. Involvement in the decision, so that that's how that timeframe works out. So that being said, there is not a need for. Funding for the charter revision reporting secretary and the next budget. Ethics Commission, it's a status quo budget. They have not thankfully had to meet in quite some time. Anybody want to make any changes there?
Well, the reporting secretary is one of the things that's in their budget and we've got on the agenda.
What we're gonna do later on, after we get through all of this before we finalize the budget, Amy has expounded on the research that was done by. Ruth Calories and I think Peg, when Peg was still here. On. The fee structure for reporting secretaries, so we're gonna talk about that and. The salary compression associated with the increase in the room wage before we finalize them, so. We whatever change we make on either of those things would be across the board, so we don't need to take consideration of that department by department.
Okay.
Move we approve the ethics mission at five hundred dollars.
There a second?
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Diversity Council. So they were provided the budget submission letter that went out in, went out in November and they didn't. Get it or respond to it or whatever, so we did build them in some funding for a recording secretary. They've since reached out. Like only in the last ten days or so and asked what the process is to get involved in the budget, so I explained to them. What their next opportunity will be, but for the time being, we put them in just with some recording secretary funds.
Make a motion, we accept the diversity council as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Arts and Culture Commission, this is new. We, at their request, we impannal them a couple of months back. They did submit a budget request. It was actually a pretty robust. To do list, and when we were putting the budget together, Amy and I thought that. Probably best to start them off with some funding to see what they're able to accomplish, but. May not be appropriate in their first year to provide their their full budget ask. So that's why although they asked for eighty one fifty, I'm recommending forty five hundred, which is five hundred for recording secretary and five thousand or four thousand for programs.
Sorry, I missed the all presentation on the twenty second that they were at on and I don't know what traffic box graph is.
Oh, I can tell you.
A traffic box graph.
So the square boxes that are at the end of like one forty, there's just a metal box about this big. They're looking to buy racks of like the tree or something distinctive to splinter to put around them.
Yeah, they've been working with the historical society also to get photos to use on there as well.
I'm sure that it was something to go on something. I just didn't know what it was.
It's like wrapping a service truck.
I own one of those on Route five.
Do you really?
Yeah.
Do you really? Which one?
The one next to right near Phelps Road.
How do you own a lot?
Well, if you crash into it and ruin it, you might.
So I see Amy's straight ahead of this. I'm really glad she asked that because I wanted to. They'll be here all week.
It was a long time ago. Maybe somebody else's owns it now.
Any any other comments on the Arts and Culture Commission as presented?
So I didn't. Get their presentation either.
They didn't come and present.
We just didn't.
We didn't miss a thing.
It was in the book.
I guess I see it in the book.
Okay. My question is, do they have plans of doing any fundraising themselves?
They better.
They do.
They did apply for a grant. They didn't get it.
Yeah, they were one of the applicants for the Greater Together Grant.
Okay.
They have talked about doing private fundraising. We could facilitate the same service we provide to other similar organizations. But they have not, to my knowledge, scheduled one yet. They also will be here later to ask specifically that question.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Arts and Culture Commission in the month of forty five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I just wanna say that it's nice to see a new commission be so energetic and be so. Passionate and really wanted to good and get started, so I think it's great.
I'd just add to that by saying it's nice to see new people.
Yes.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I I agree with Sarah. I would like to hear more from them before. Proving.
They're gonna be in the other, the selectments meeting with a different, not a budget related thing forever.
Right, so. If we want, if we want to show deference to Charlie, we can highlight that in yellow. That means you probably keep it maybe quite a bit longer than she had planned tonight.
Well, the interactive murals on are the under the. Under South Water Street. Where it's always got graffiti on it, so. To me, that's a good idea. The boxes, I mean, that was something that was brought up years ago by somebody on the previous. For the swatman saying that we need to do something to screw stuff, so that might go a little bit changed the plan statement. So there's forty five hundred right there. They're not gonna be able to do everything.
Would you want to come back? That would be my plan. So there's a motion and a second on the table. The motion maker withdraw their motions.
Draw me a second.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll we'll keep that as yellow and we'll come back to it later on. Board of Finance. At your own peril. Anybody want to cut this? There's two departments you don't mess with, the Board of Finance and the Treasurer's Office.
Make a motion to accept the Board of Finance fifty three, three twenty five.
Motion wisely made by Allen. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Yeah, I'm not afraid of me.
I'll just look right back.
There's a few.
Any questions or comments on the assessors' budget?
We accept the assessors' budget as presented at two hundred eleven thousand nine hundred and three dollars.
See if they pass our.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Oh.
Patty, you're on. If you can mute yourself, that'd be great. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Or assessment appeals.
Make a motion, we accept the Board of Assessment Peels proposed budget requested three thousand three hundred dollars.
Second.
Made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Tax collector.
Will we accept the tax collector at one hundred and forty two thousand three hundred and fourteen?
Second.
Made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Treasurer.
Hmm.
Yeah, good luck.
Should we accept the proposed two hundred sixty one thousand two hundred thirteen dollars for the treasury?
There a second? Made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Capital Improvement Planning Committee, this is the funds for their reporting.
Will we accept the capital improvement committee budget at seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys going?
Yeah.
I'm opposed. Really?
Yes.
All right, Murray, am I breaking the time?
No, I already said yes. It's for their recordings at the beginning and you guys are going to. Be doing it later and.
Right. Motion carries three to one. Legal.
Make a motion, we accept the legal department at two hundred eighty thousand.
Second.
Made and seconded, any discussion?
The one question, do we tend to need more legal in an assessment year?
No.
Oh, it comes different. Okay, we would tend to need to need more legal in a year where there were more labor contracts that were up. We're not in that. We're gonna be, next year will be just police. Okay. Supervisor, you're talking about the labor, I'm talking about the labor contract. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Activities and fees, let's do these one at a time because this is kind of all over the place.
Or about some groups.
Making an offer, what do you want to do?
Let's propose to accept the Melrose School at. Five hundred American Heritage River Commission at thirty five hundred. I was looking for another. I guess the rest of them, I'll leave it at that, sorry, too.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the Melrose School request and the American Heritage River request. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. So I'll tell you right off the bat, probate is a per capita assessment. So is the health districts.
Yep.
Metro Hartford Alliance. Greater Hartford Transit District, not Metro Hartford Alliance.
So our CCM and Crog, right?
Yep. Boy.
Can I move that we accept the domestic violence line for the network against domestic abuse at five thousand dollars?
Just give me one second. I want to bang out the per capita assessments once.
Okay.
That is. It's.
You want a motion for this?
Yeah, I'd like I'd like a motion to approve the probate, North Central Health, CCM, Crog. And Greater Hartford Transit and Metro Hartford Alliance. Sir?
Probate.
Probate, North Central Health, CCM, Crog, Metro Hartford, Greater Hartford Transit District. Can I have that motion?
They will make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, any discussion?
May I just ask, no values, that just.
As presented. Do you like this? Do you want the values?
We can do that. I think it's up to you. Your motion.
So for, so probate is two thousand eight fifty three. North Central Health is fifty two thousand one fifty. CCM is seven thousand thirty five. Crog is ten thousand eight hundred and thirty four. Metro Hartford Alliance is two thousand two seventy five. Greater Hartford Transit District is nineteen eighty two.
Alan, Sarah.
Alan, Ray. Any further discussion on that?
Well, the only question I have is. It says there's a difference of a hundred ninety six dollars, but I don't see a difference.
In the Greater Hartford Transit?
Yeah.
It was seventeen eighty six and now it's nineteen eighty two.
Seventeen eighty, okay, now, okay, I'm looking at the wrong column, okay.
Oh, if they're all like. Capital, how can they all change? They, well, so the, that's a good question. The reason is, it depends on which per capita you're using. So the Department of Public Health does an annual. Population census, which most of these are predicated on. Some of them also use the US census, which is not the same number. Okay, I asked that same question. One of them actually came in and they had to submit a change. So there's your answer to what is actually a pretty good question. That's the change up too, but. My guess is that the ones that didn't change are laggards and we'll catch up next year. Any further comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, now, how about Memorial Day and the Four Town Fair?
I think Sarah was next with domestic violence before.
Okay, I'll move we approve or accept the domestic violence line at five thousand dollars.
There a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Melissa looks heavenly and listen to.
So, no. So we're in a, we're a regional service area. They provide service to, I think, eight different communities. And. They actually don't send us our requests. This is just something that we have historically done, actually, when I was on their board of directors and on the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen. I entered up five hundred bucks a year for a couple of years. Historically, it was, I think, twenty five hundred and it's gotten up to five thousand.
I know there has been situations where Melissa has worked with them and sent people in our community for service.
Just to highlight, you know, the the services they provide, I was on their board of directors for a couple of years and I don't know where their safe houses. Which I think is really a testament to the the degree of privacy that they take in in terms of.
Watch that Netflix show, Made? No, you should watch it. Did you watch it?
Yes.
Really good, exactly that bit of that topic.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with five thousand. I just want to make sure the public are aware that we are utilizing it on occasion in in this avenue with anybody who is in.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the. Sorry, now it goes, they're twelve hundred dollars for Memorial Day and. One thousand dollars for the Four Town Fair.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. I still see outstanding recognition, cemeteries. Health and Wellness and North Central Mental Health.
Okay, I'm assuming the recognition is the budget for stuff like this tonight. So I'll make a motion on that we accept the thousand dollars for recognition.
There a second? Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Cemeteries.
And again, Cemetery Association, I missed their presentation, although I did read the minutes on and it's gonna reduce them. From what their past was. Just a question, did they say anything about the mowing service? The contract went up to almost six thousand dollars, but did they go out to bid on that? And if not, who is doing it? Do we know?
Do you, Amy, do you remember if they said that when we met with them or if they said that when they were before the board?
I think they said it while they were before the board along with, I don't believe that they said whether they went out or not. They just said their price went up like six thousand dollars, that's forty five thousand they asked for, is what we cost them to do lawn care and snow removal.
Just because I thought it was done by the same person year after year after year. And I thought that was part of volunteer stuff.
No, they they use a paid for service now. And and to Amy's point, that's is the guy hadn't raised his rate in a couple of years.
Do we know who it is?
It's not worth it anymore, it was.
Yeah, okay, all right. Yeah.
I believe, yeah.
What was the answer? I believe that's right.
Yeah, that's on very long under the truck.
So I said, they they got twenty this year. They asked for forty five. I said it was thirty, which is still a fifty percent increase. You guys can take my recommendation, change it?
I think we need to do the increase only because people have been bringing up some areas and I'm really the town that I saw. Um, did some damage I saw and got erosion that's happened a little bunch from, I think, it's from the cemetery that's been looking for a lot of years. So a few dollars this year will help to get them through that. But I don't agree with the forty thousand, I think that's way too high. But I would go with thirty.
Anybody else?
Is that a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we accept the thirty thousand dollars amount for Cemetery Association.
Second.
Made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
East Windsor Health and Wellness.
Oral DNA. Um, we're carrying a zero line for community health services.
Yeah.
Um, there are reasons to do it.
We took them out last year. And reason for that is they still provide all of the same services to the town, whether or without the municipal contribution. They're state funded.
Okay.
And so they were effectively asking us to make contribution. I talked to both the chief of police and the director of community services about whether or not we'd be funding that and they they both said without hesitation, no.
Sometimes question if we should even fund North Central Health.
Will we accept East Windsor Health and Wellness at four thousand seven hundred and two dollars?
Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the last one, I actually should have included in the one, the what in a motion we did with per per capita assessments, but that's what the North Central Mental Health is, it's a per capita thing.
Make a motion to accept. The North Central Mental Health.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, by my by my tally, we've accepted all of the. Subcategories of activities and fees as I had presented them, so I'd ask for a motion. To approve a department budget of one hundred and twenty four thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars. So move, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just.
One twenty four, eighteen fourteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. I T.
Make a motion, we accept the proposed budget of two hundred eighty three thousand ninety two dollars for the information technology lines.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, any discussion? Sarah. All in favor?
Aye.
Town clerk.
Will we accept the town clerk budget at one hundred and fifty one thousand one hundred and seventy nine dollars?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The landline, I'm almost saying that.
The what?
That landline. The pay online system for land.
Oh, no, she and Eric are gonna have a meeting about that in a couple of minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Registars of voters.
Will we accept the register voters budget at seventy two thousand eight hundred and eighty nine dollars?
There a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Planning.
Make a motion, we accept the planning budget at two hundred eighty three thousand five hundred fifty five dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can we do the next two together?
Yes.
Make a motion that we accept the planning and zoning commission as proposed by first selectment, three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and the zoning appeals board. first selectment three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and the zoning appeals board at one thousand four hundred dollars.
Second. Motion made by Alan, seconded by Charlie, any discussion?
Um, just because he's putting in specific notes that he puts the recording secretary, you know, there may be a change up or down on those um. Shouldn't we be making a motion?
It's called the last pass rule, so what we're gonna do is as we go through the regional departments, then we'll get to the recording secretary and our timeline. A- a- anything we change in that, as long as we make the motion retro, everything looks like last pass controls.
Okay. I just want to make sure we don't lose it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Property insurance.
Move that we accept the property insurance for the amount of one hundred and eighty five thousand.
Made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's like to do the next four together, if that's okay, five.
Wetlands, veterans, agriculture, conservation. And E D C.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we uh accept the proposed eighteen hundred dollars for wetlands, twelve hundred dollars for veterans commission, five hundred dollars for the ag commission and five hundred dollars for the conservation commission.
Second.
Made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
E D C.
We accept E D C at one thousand eight hundred twenty five dollars.
There a second?
I thought we put professional services on that line.
Good. It's just it's just showing up on your document because there's history, but there's nothing for
alright, it's out.
Three years?
Actually, you got the important secondary on it. What are they? What are they using the human?
I have no idea.
I I'm set on the board and I don't know what they use it for.
He he listed it in the book, but I can't recall right now and I don't have my book, but he did list a couple of.
Increased training work for existing new professional service may include branded by the preparer. Market studies and marketing materials.
I don't think. Didn't have the dues in there? So I think there's a chamber of commerce.
They got, they got, now they don't think they got those cities, new recording secretary, the tariff raise one twenty five. All time one twenty four fifteen hundred, increased training budget for existing new commissioners. Um and professional services may include grant advisor prepare market studies and marketing materials. I'm not sure. That's not a preview they should have, or that's a preview that should be within the so what do you create here?
We we use departmental funding if you have stuff on it, huh?
Yeah, so. I would remove that right off the question.
Be twenty five?
Not that long, yeah, well, is that what you provided to me at twenty five?
Oh, no, it's the thousand dollars.
The thousand dollars, I would take that right out of it.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion that we will be due.
I think I made a motion for it, but there wasn't a second?
Right.
Okay, good, I just want to make sure we didn't say. Um, so that motion dies.
Yeah, my motion dies without a second.
I so I would like to make a motion that we fund eight hundred and twenty five dollars um to the economic development commission.
There a second?
Second.
Made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Charlie, you were no?
Yep.
Police.
I've been sat through the police on department's budget both with us here and at their police commission meeting. Um, I think they did an excellent job actually with all everything they've got through this last year, I think that they're going for it to keep the budget on down as low as they can other than the mandatory protect holders, so. Um, I have no issue with making motion to accept them on the three million nine hundred and twenty four thousand two hundred and sixty four dollars.
Made in seconded. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Police commission.
Will we accept the police mission um one thousand seven hundred and twenty five dollars?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Emergency management.
Will we accept emergency management at forty one thousand forty eight dollars?
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here you go. Building.
Uh make a motion and accept the building. Apartment for, is it the building apartment? No, yeah, uh at one seventy six four oh seven.
Is there a second?
I'm just going through. Just to double check on my notes.
I can second the first question.
Thank you.
Yep.
So where are you?
Probably moving near twenty. That's next one.
Twenty was more than seventy. We can remove that now, actually.
Good point.
Yeah. The two thousand.
I'll get it.
Professional services reduced to ten thousand.
Yeah, he could do that.
Yeah.
So we're gonna take that in.
Yeah, so so Alan is the motion maker, the amended motion would be one seventy five five eighty seven.
I would like to amend my motion to subtract the eight twenty to be one
Seventy five.
Five eighty seven.
I amend my second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Communications.
Move to accept communications for twenty one thousand nine hundred and eighty two dollars.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public works.
Make a motion to accept public works at one million one hundred fifty six thousand forty three dollars. Second.
Made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Town property.
Next final number for electricity?
Yes.
Hydrants in here, yeah, hydrants.
It is not the final number on the water, it's our best guess, we we don't have the final letter for them yet.
Okay. But.
It is a reasonable best guess, but it's, we don't know for sure.
Yep. Make a motion, we accept town properties at one million one hundred ninety one four hundred fifteen.
There a second?
Second for discussion.
Made in seconded, Charlie.
Cast and diesel.
Yeah, oh, John.
We were paying less than two dollars a gallon in our last year.
Oh.
And of course, obviously, everybody knows what happened at the farm.
Do we have enough, are we budgeting enough now?
Maybe not, we'll we'll find out with what happens in Russia.
At this, at this point, we haven't given any indication that we are not budgeting enough.
We went up fifty thousand dollars. From one fifteen to one sixty five.
Forty four percent I.
Do you have an actual for current year to date?
Yep, um current year to date is seventy six thousand. And that's through today, I think.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
I made a note on the water.
Yeah, water's still, we don't have a final, so the four hundred thousand for hydrants is my best guess.
Yeah, and I think the Connecticut Water Company told us a big plan on having the final number out in April, which is super narrow.
Yeah.
For reusipalities of two percent.
One point eight six.
One point eight six?
That's what I have in my notes, one point eight six, we're about that figure up to four five oh nine. And then on the um hydrage. We got some hydrage.
What what's hydrage need to go to?
The hydrants, we had all take from maybe even one too many zeros.
Four hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, it's got zero zero.
Four, you got four eight nine nine.
That was the increase. Because one increase was point seven six percent and the other one was one point eight six percent in January twenty twenty three, which brought it up to four oh two eight ninety nine.
Okay, and then what about the regular water going from twelve three to four five oh nine? Okay, so those will be increases.
Yep. That note was three dollars per gallon, but we know gas where you go that, so good luck keeping that figure right.
Yeah. So if there are no other changes, the new department total number is one million one ninety four four forty three. Yes, ma'am. So uh who was the maker of the motion, was that you?
Alan.
Yeah. Well, I made my motion to reflect those changes. Second.
Any further discussion on the department? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Make a motion, we accept road improvements at four hundred thirty thousand.
There a second?
Second.
Made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Building committee.
Make a motion to accept the building committee um in my four hundred dollars.
Second.
Made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm not.
Sanitation.
Make a motion, we accept sanitation proposed at one million sixty three thousand four hundred forty five. Second.
Made in seconded. Uh any discussion? I'll just add, you know, as unseemly as that number is, I would just tell you that we we are the envy of most towns in North Central Connecticut because our tipping fee is like seventy percent what most other towns are paying. We have a the sweetheart of all sweetheart fields, and this is a major policy issue in the state.
Yeah, now that Hartford's leaving Mira, that's gonna screw all the rest of the ones that are in the earth, they're all gonna go up through the roof.
You know who's getting? Uh Hartford? USA Hall?
Oh, yeah, I was wondering that.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, I'm sorry, I'm I'm tragic.
Yeah.
Sanitation.
Yeah. Under the simple stream.
Yeah, so far we spent seven thousand seven hundred and twenty this year.
Right, and you estimated we spending between eight and ten thousand dollars less here?
We know, Lance is estimating that we may, but he doesn't have anything to point to about that.
And it just started in the fall, so this seven thousand seven hundred is like only a couple months.
And he also pointed to the possibility of uh paying eight to ten thousand dollars less than than budget um to be a soft estimate and and rather err on the side of not blowing your budget.
Okay. And just, I'd be curious on the sanitation, we got four town fair with seven hundred and two.
Oh, that was, so we used to do four town fair when we had the trash, so we used to pay for the trash. We paid more on year we had the trash.
Right, the year.
This year is the year we had it, we were the host.
Yeah.
Was this fiscal twenty two?
So we paid the trash.
But we paid the five thousand dollars right before town fair instead, but it covered the trash.
Okay. So that connection model, right?
Right.
Well, that's that's in there for history.
I'm just.
Back to the F Y C.
Okay, I'm good.
So vote's been called, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Senior services.
The sub senior services at two hundred and fifty four thousand two hundred and seventy four dollars.
Second.
Made in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Elderly commission.
Will we accept elderly commission at five hundred dollars?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Social services.
Will we accept social services at one hundred and seventy seven thousand four hundred and twenty two dollars?
Second.
Made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, Robert library.
Uh providing twenty five thousand dollars for the Robert library.
Is there a second? Motion's made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I I used it on that might also. Did they comment on um the past that they're going to purchase?
They did.
Are those similar to the passes that they brought it up? Why were they on the other side?
Warehouse point library.
Make a motion, we accept the proposed budget for the warehouse point library at two hundred ninety nine thousand seven hundred and fifty.
Very excited? I'm gonna go Sarah.
Yes.
Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Department total for libraries of three hundred and twenty four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, that emotion. So move. They made in seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Recreation.
Well, she takes up the parking recreation month, two hundred and thirty three thousand five hundred and seventy three dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You may. Historical commission.
Make a motion, we accept the historical commission at five hundred.
Second.
Made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes. We don't do the board of education.
Do we get a look, can you give a bucket for them to review before or what we need?
There should be something by the town clerk.
Yeah, I don't know what book they provided, it's just a filing.
Didn't they put one in recite?
They're they're going to need to submit the same information that I'm gonna submit when this, when this budget is done, I can get it from Patrick. Do you want, do you want there line by line?
Yeah.
Oh, that. It's probably.
Yeah. Yeah, I need to go through one by one myself.
I don't know how much line by line they're doing anymore.
I think I think more so than they were.
I don't think you're gonna see the different color coded sheets that we used to get.
Right, but he's he's actually, isn't he using the code now?
I have no idea.
I think we should all come in and see a line by line.
Um, so we have a few budgets left to go in about five minutes, we're not gonna finish the whole thing, do we want? Um, so we have a few budgets left to go in about five minutes, we're not gonna finish the whole thing, do we want a break here?
Sure.
All right, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn the budget workshop. What we're gonna do is as part of our regular agenda, we'll take up this discussion, finish this off and get some answers on outstanding questions. We actually probably, because of the nature of the meeting, will take some things out of order, um, that will hopefully make things run a bit smoother. Every motion to adjourn.
Will we adjourn for the budget workshop?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are, we are adjourned at 6:55.